We're going to go ahead and start. It is now 7:30 and we're going to go ahead and start the city council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
Alderman Martinez.
Present.
Alderman Felix.
Say, "Present."
President.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Donaldworth.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
Madam Mayor of Aquorum.
Thank you very much. The invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Anthony Charles Conley from the Antioch Baptist Church. I know, I saw him. Oh, okay.
Good evening once again. I bring you greetings from Antioch Baptist Church, 517 Helmholtz, Waukegan, Illinois. This month, we are celebrating our 71st year in the city of Waukegan. And we are just certainly glad to be able to come once again. This is my second time to come and share a word of invocation to hopefully get this meeting started. Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Our Father, let me first start by saying to you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for a reasonable portion of health and strength, the health and strength that we need to fulfill our callings and for friendship. Thank you, oh God, for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing responsibilities that are granted to us. We also thank you for the freedom to embrace you or even the freedom to reject you. Thank you, oh God, for loving us and granting us your abundant grace and mercy. In the scriptures, you have said that the citizens ought to obey the governing authorities because you have established those very authorities to promote peace, order, and justice. Therefore, oh God, I pray for our mayor on tonight, for the various levels of city officials, and for those assembled on our city council this evening. Heavenly Father, I would ask that you would grant them the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest in issues of our times. I would ask, oh heavenly Father, that you would grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people and the citizens of Waukegan. I would ask that you would grant them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. Heavenly Father, I ask that you would grant them confidence in what is good and what is right. Heavenly Father, I ask that you would grant them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. And finally, heavenly Father, I would ask that you would grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray tonight for the agenda set before them this evening. So, Father, please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Waukegan. Now, Lord, let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord, my strength and my redeemer, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. And thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the Father, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. And for those of you watching from home, I thank you for watching. Again, I want to remind people that our agendas are put out on the Friday before our city council meetings. Please take advantage and look at what those agendas are. Again, you can go to our website at waukeganiel.gov. It's important information that you should be informed about and take advantage of it. This week has been a hard week. As many of the community knows, we lost a wonderful girl, Ms. Collier, in our community. I personally, along with the community, have taken this very, very hard. And I want to take a couple of minutes and talk about gun violence. We've lost way too many of our young people due to gun violence. When we lose our young people, we lose our future leaders. And this young lady was one of them. As a resident, I'm angry. I'm just, I don't understand it. I don't understand how this senseless gun violence is going on, not only in Lake County, but across our nation. Some of the things that we're doing here is I am working with Waukegan Police Chief Navarro to make sure that we have more officers on our street. When I came into office, we had, I believe it was 143 officers. We now have 158 and will be going to 163 this. We're bringing in more recruits. And as they get through their academy, they will be back out on the streets. We return to community-based policing. I believe in community policing. I think we need community policing. And like I said, it was something I was insistent about when I came in. We've launched an anonymous tip line. The other things that we've done to work with the community is we launched a faith-based panel, a not-for-profit panel, and an intergovernment committee, all working together. And they meet here, usually intergovernment committee, we rotate, all the others meet here on the first or second Thursday of the month. The reason for hosting these meetings is so that we talk as a community. They understand what, you know, they're not always informed what's going on in the community. They don't always understand the violence that's happening. They don't see the police reports. We discuss those things. We discuss how can we work to make sure that we have summer programs? What can we do? What I do know is one person or this council can't solve the problem. It's a community that we need to work together on. We need to make sure that we have youth programs for our children to work. We have tried. Last year, we did not get a whole lot of people. We have worked with other community organizations. They have had trouble getting our youth to take some of the jobs. But we will have a program this summer that will be working on some of our fire hydrants. They will be cleaning and painting, but these are just some of the jobs that get our kids out and working and making them more independent. Civility is another issue I want to talk about. When I first became alderman, it was my pledge to ensure that we treat people with dignity and respect. This spring, the city council will introduce a civility pledge, which states the following: "In the interest of stability, I pledge to promote stability by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving this objective. I, along with the alderpersons, the city clerk, and the city treasurer, will have the opportunity to sign that pledge, so look for that coming this early summer." On a personal level, I'm asking people to take a few minutes and think about how you treat other people. We talk about Facebook and the difficulty with Facebook. I was a little outraged this weekend when I saw on Facebook a resident write something very, not only disparaging, but just plain mean about an employee here at City Hall because they didn't, they had some trouble getting things. Instead of calling and talking to my office or whatever, to put an employee's first and last name online and then shame them is distasteful. And then we wonder why our children don't know how to behave. They're following our example. We have to make sure that we're speaking to each other with respect. We don't need to yell at each other. We can have a normal conversation. But I'm telling you, it starts here, and I'm hoping others will follow because these are our children that we're talking about. Not everything in life is perfect. There's no utopia. But learning patience with each other is a big part. Some general comments of things going on in our community. June is National Gun Violence Awareness Month. And the first Friday of June, which is June 2nd, is National Gun Violence Awareness Day, also known as Wear Orange Day. I'd like the aldermen to take note of that and wear orange on that day. The month and day honor the more than 40,000 people killed by gun violence and 85,000 people shot annually. Some good things happening in our community are five Waukegan district, or school districts, 60 employees were nominated by the Lake County Regional Office of Education for Educator of the Year. Congratulations to Andrea Curia, a second-grade dual-language teacher at Carmen Buckner; Deana Sampras, a photography teacher at Waukegan High School; David Stronach, a teacher at AOE-C Alternative Option Education Center; Roberto Silva, principal at Carmen Buckner; and Alicia Williams, manager of Transportation and Child Nutrition. Congratulations also go out to Katie Dudley, a 30-year Waukegan teacher who runs the Cook Magnet Orchestra founded by Waukegan's Mariachi Estrellas for being named National Grammy Educator Award Quarterfinalist. The award recognizes current educators who have made a significant and lasting contribution to music education and demonstrate a commitment to the broader cause of maintaining music education in schools. Waukegan High School graduation is this Friday, May 19th, at Weiss Field. Over the next week, we look forward to hearing about accomplishments of the class and the student's next step, whether that's college, trade schools, or work. Congratulations to the Bulldogs. You make us Waukegan proud. Waukegan owns U-MMA Center co-founder Ash Bach was invited to the White House reception in celebration of Adolf Hitler. In his speech, President Biden thanked attendees for creating a place of connection and highlighted Muslim contributions to the United States. U-MMA Center opened in downtown Waukegan in 2004 with the vision of a world where all people have the opportunity to live a life free from poverty and continue to work towards that vision. Congratulations. As a reminder, the Cole Children's Museum pop-up is at our Belvedere Mall and is open on Thursday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 and Saturdays from 10:00 to 4:00 through the end of June. The free pop-up lets kids explore construction using oversized building blocks, conduct air experiments, and enjoy the art studio and reading nook. Kids will also receive take-home activities. Our condolences go out to the family of Waukegan resident Helen T. Baylen, who passed away last month at the age of 95. She graduated from St. Barlemue Grade School in 1941 and Waukegan Township High School in 1945. She was married to the late John L. Baylen on May 27th, 1950, at St. Barlemue Catholic Church in Waukegan. She was a devout Catholic and longtime member of the parish, which later merged with the Most Blessed Trinity Church. She was also enthusiastic and active member of St. Barlemue Senior Club. Her career at Abbott Laboratory spanned nearly 23 years. She was a highly devoted family and friends, or devoted to her family and friends, and will be deeply missed. Waukegan's Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony will be held Monday, May 29th. The parade will step off at 10:45 a.m. from Washington and Genesee and will proceed west to Veterans Memorial Plaza, where the ceremony will immediately follow. If your organization would like to be in or be part of the parade, call 847-599-2525 to be added to the list. And in case of inclement weather, the ceremony will be held here in council chambers. Today is Peace Officers Memorial Day, a special day to honor and remember our local state, our local state and federal peace officers who have sacrificed their lives or have been disabled while serving in the line of duty. This holiday was established in 1961 by the Kennedy Administration, with Congress authorizing the president to designate May 15th as a day to recognize these brave individuals. At this time, I'm also going to ask our corporate counsel to give an update on 200 Julian. As you know, we are in the process of, or that building is in the process of being sold. There's been some blocks along the way that we have ironed out. But corporate counsel, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Last time we spoke about this, the communication that we provided to the public was that the sale would be happening in July. We still expect that timeline to hold. We do expect that the property will be sold by the current owner's Apex to a new purchaser who has been identified in July. In the meantime, we've been working with the Lake County Court and using the power of the court, unfortunately, we've had to do this, to force the current owners to conduct some very necessary life safety repairs, which include getting the second elevator back up and running, fixing the fire pump, and then also making necessary repairs to the structural concrete piers within the parking garage, which was one of the most egregious things that had gone on in that building is that the two-level parking garage, the structural piers, had begun to deteriorate. We also realize that there is an issue right now with the lighting in the parking lot. The judge has required that an electrician come in and address that. The good news is, is that the purchaser, which is an organization called SSA EVI, they have actually already submitted their application to HUD to take over the building. This will allow them to obtain their financing to go in, and then the rents will be then shifted to them, which is how affordable housing developers are actually able to operate the property. The, this developer has committed to immediately upon taking title, beginning $2.5 million in general security investments, which will include new windows, shades, security cameras. That's the beginning. The, from the 12 to 18 months after taking title, they pledged, and this is part of their commitment to HUD and part of their application, $17.1 million into the building, which comes out to about $114,000 per unit. That sounds like a lot. This building has a long way to go. This building's been neglected for a very long time. During that time, people will not lose their housing. They may be shifted to other units. But the goal will be to keep the residents who have valid leases, who are there just trying to live their lives and who have done an amazing job advocating for themselves, who are a tenant organization, keeping, keeping the pressure on, not only with the operators, not only with HUD, but with the city as well, that they will have a clean, safe, habitable building where they can not only continue to live, but build a community. That is our goal. That's what the mayor's charged us with, and we're not going to rest until we do that. I do keep using the word "we." I should credit my co-corporation counsel, Kelly Gandersky, because she is the one who is going to court and making sure this happens. And also, a huge amount of credit to the Fire Department, Fire Marshal Zupac, Building Commissioner Sallis. They've been in that building constantly, making sure that the promises that have been made and often broken by the current owner have been kept, usually at the blunt end of a judge's gavel. But the, without staff doing that, we wouldn't have had a case. So, thank you, Mayor.
I want to just say that, you know, we were in court last week with them because, again, they wanted to walk away from having security there. That's not acceptable, and we will continue to fight for the residents of Julian Towers. And we're, we're holding them to the fire. Apex has been in court. As soon as they missed some of their dates, corporate counsel had them back in court before the judge, and we will continue. I don't expect from now until July is going to be easy, but we're in this for the long haul. Last, I want to thank interim finance director Don Schultz for going over our audit tonight. One of the things that I am most proud of, of this administration, is that we have not raised the tax levy and we have drastically reduced our debt. That's a pretty big accomplishment. And what you're seeing as part of that is we now have more and more people interested in developing in our city because they see us as a stable place to develop in. So, getting our finances in order has not been an easy thing, but it has been well worth it. For all of the department heads who have been constantly hounded, "Stay within your budget, stay within your budget," I can't tell you how much I appreciate it because it's made a long difference in what we can do long-term for our community. So, thank you. That concludes the mayor's comments.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two proclamations this evening. Proclamation 2A, National Safe Boating Week is May 20th through 26, 2023. Whereas recreational boating continues to grow as a popular way for millions of Americans to relax with their families and friends. And whereas increased public participation in this healthy outdoor sport has emphasized the need for greater attention and courtesy, safety, education, to minimize incidents which lead to boating mishaps. And whereas, on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., with 75% of these being fatalities caused by drowning, and whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error, poor judgment, limited training, and not by the boat or the equipment or environmental factors. And whereas a significant number of boaters will lose their lives each year, or excuse me, will lose their lives by drowning each year, would be alive today if they had worn their life jackets. And whereas the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary Flotilla 4105, Division 41, District 9WR, which saves, which serves the Waukegan Harbor area, supports National Safe Boating Week in participation, in partnership with the U.S. Coast Guard and National Safe Boating Council, and provides boater safety education, which results in our waterways providing a relatively safe and almost accident-free environment. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 20th through 26, 2023, as National Safe Boating Week in Waukegan and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe boating, adopted this 15th day of May, 2023.
I'd like our Coast Guard to come up, be recognized.
On behalf of the city of Waukegan, thank you. Thank you for, you know, we need this awareness. We're right on the mission here. And honestly, if there's a community that needs to understand our life jackets and world safety, this is the community we need. Thank you. Thank you. Any aldermen? Are you aldermen or not used to this? This is crazy.
Okay, the next proclamation, 2B. Proclamation, Period Poverty Awareness Week, May 22nd through May 28th, 2023. Whereas period supplies are a necessary product each month for millions of people across the country. And whereas national surveys and research studies report that two in five women and girls struggle to secure enough period supplies to meet their needs each month due to a lack of income. And whereas this lack of period supplies, known as period poverty, can adversely affect the health and well-being of menstruators. And whereas period poverty exasperates the vicious cycle of poverty by forcing menstruators to withdraw from daily life, losing pay and missing educational opportunities. And whereas menstruators struggling with period poverty risk infections by using proxy products such as socks or toilet paper or not changing products as often as needed. And whereas the people of Waukegan recognize that period poverty is a public health issue, and addressing period poverty can lead to economic opportunity for the state's people and communities and improve health for women and girl menstruators, thus ensuring that all people have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas Illinois is proud to be home to the trusted community-based organizations, including Keeping Families Covered, that recognize the importance of period products in ensuring health and providing economic stability and thus distribute period products through various channels. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois, do hereby proclaim May 22nd through May 28th as Period Poverty Awareness Week in Waukegan and encourage its citizens of Waukegan, the citizens of Waukegan, to donate generously to supply banks, product drives, and organizations that collect and distribute period products so all Waukegan residents can thrive and reach their full potential. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this proclamation, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Keeping Families Covered, adopted this 15th day of May, 2023.
Thank you very much.
That concludes your proclamations, Mayor.
Thank you. Audience time.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane. Thank you, Mayor. We've got a number of people signed up here. Forgive me if I mispronounce your name, but just reiterate your name at the podium. So, we've got, I'm going to read the first five. Jeanette Williams, Randy, I think it's Polsky, Ron, can't read your last name, sorry. Michael, Urbannick, Rayon Edwards. So, if you can line up here at the podium.
I think part of those were the Coast Guard that left.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I do want to say, for those of you who are expecting answers from us, we do not answer at this, at this time. That's never something we do. So, if you ask us questions, we cannot answer those.
You'll have three minutes, just.
Oh, I can start right now?
State your name and go.
Okay. My name is Jeanette Williams, and I'm asking for help. I've had my roof put on 2021 with a permit, and then they came back out on December 2022 to redo the roof again with no permit. May 3rd, 2023, they were at my house with no permit. I'm asking the city to go after them and get your money. It's lost profit on the city of Waukegan. They used my home again. My roof is still not right. It'll probably have to be done again. But they've used you guys twice. It's a lost profit.
Thank you. The next speaker, we have Randy Polsky? I don't know if he's, I think they were.
Yeah, I think he was part of the Coast Guard.
Is there a Ron in the audience? No? Okay. Rayon Edwards?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Tomorrow's DJ day. Tomorrow, 6 o'clock, we're going to be right there on the corner of Township. I would hope to see a lot of my city officials there. Let's not, let's not forget what happened to him. A young man riding on his bike hit by an ambulance. Stop sign was there. Big and clear, it's red. Lights, no sirens. You're still seeing it. Sirens, no lights. Lights, no sirens. Police in a rush, they cut their lights on, speed past a car, then cut them off. Ain't nothing wrong. It's disgusting. And we're talking about. It's disgusting, and we're talking about setting an example. We got to do better. Two hundred Julian Street, Stuart, you talked about how the foundation and everything is wrong. You need to go in that building for yourself to see. That building has been up far too long. Those babies stay sick and they stay at the hospital because they are inhaling mold. It may be a best ice up in there. Ain't that why we towed down Barwell to rebuild it, cuz it had been up for so many years and nothing has been done? We seen the same thing happening over there on Fourteenth Street. Again, what I tell y'all is, stop trying to make all the decisions about our community, and let us get at this table with y'all and help y'all. We talking about gun violence. Do you know when somebody shot, it's two people show up at these scenes? That's myself and this man Clyde. I don't see nobody else, but I see a million people come up here and tell y'all about all the work they doing in this community. Well, I'm showing up and I ain't gotta come. I'm showing up and I ain't gotta job, but I still get there. A lot of them got cars. I remind y'all, the community don't see the work that's being done behind the scenes. They only see that frontline work. They hurting. And we still haven't got it. We still haven't pushed the needle. We still haven't turned the curve. We talking about the babies? If anybody gave a damn, we would have a community center. They have nowhere to go, nothing to do. You talk about jobs that y'all got for the community? Haven't I showed y'all, I could put two hundred kids in a room? Who else done it? I do it by myself. I fundraise, I promote, I knock on doors, I make it happen. And if Ray Ray can do it, I know damn well y'all can. Cuz y'all got some I don't. Y'all have excess. I don't have that. Before I close, I wanna remind everybody up here. Respect is given, disrespect is earned. That's the motto. So I say this, if I'm somewhere and somebody eighty years old hit me, I will hit them back. Yes, I will. Y'all talk about, talk, talk to us right, and we'll talk to y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
We're hurting.
Thank you. Ms. Margaret Karosko?
Good evening. My topic tonight is what's good for the geese is good for the ganter. The first item is the liquor licenses. I know a lot of talk because they just got renewed, et cetera. Just for clarification, folks, the state of Illinois is a two-licensed state. That means that both must be valid, the state license and the city license, in order to sell and serve. If one is not valid, then by statute automatically the other one is invalid. Okay, so I know there's a lot of confusion out there, I don't know why, but just for clarification. The next, today, in the packet I just sent out, okay? This was an advertisement of an event that was held today. It was sent out county-wide, okay? And it advertises, it was sponsored by the county, and it says Chester's Donuts and Coffee. Uh, this is a company that claims to be in, from Highland Park, okay? So my first question is that, were other, Waukegan businesses even given an opportunity to participate, or was it built, bid out? The next page is a copy of them today, out there, okay? The next page is with the state of Illinois, where I looked up that name. It doesn't exist. How could that be? How could they have been allowed to sell food today, an event, and they're not even legally registered? However, there is a tattoo company who has five different aliases, and one of the names, interestingly, and they're from Highland Park too, is Donut Chester. Get it? Okay? So my question here is that, was the Lake County Health Department, where the permits, city of Waukegan, where's the permits, event permits? Other events are given a huge list of requirements before we can have an event. However, this company from Highland Park, they can do whatever they want. They had an event, nothing's required. I have a problem with that, okay? And also, a lot of people are asking, once again, other events are told you can't do this, you can't do that. One of the things was, we were told that, and we took the time, we knocked on doors, we talked to the people, that you could not sell outside of your business, okay? We accept it, if that's the rule for everyone. But a lot of people are saying, if that's true, why is it for scoop the loop, where there's tons of people in the sidewalks, and everyone is selling outside in front? If they can do it, why can't others? And the second thing is that the hub, we're told.
Thank you, Ms. Karosko.
They're, they're.
Thank you.
Raising out their space.
Clyde McElmore?
I just wanna say it's time for you to go. Mayor Ann Taylor, it's time for you to go. I wanna say Happy Mother's Day to mothers that's on this board, even you, Ann, but you still got to go. But, uh, I heard ladies talk about people selling stuff. You know, my mama died two, two years ago, and I had to suffer yesterday. And I tried to drive around, and everywhere I drove, they were selling Mother's Day stuff, flowers everywhere. And I know damn well they didn't have no license. It made me so mad, I had to go home and just go lay down, cuz it made me think, you know what I'm saying? It made me think. But, uh, people do come out and sell, hell, I sell purses without a license. I don't care, take me to jail. But anyway, Ann, it's time for you to go. Your time is up, hit the road, Ann Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. McElmore. Brother Blanks?
Brother Blanks, Blackadder, some moving for the mind. I had an opportunity to meet with the mayor, I was with some of the mayor administration. And meeting with that administration, it was one of the first time, I should say, one of the first time of any administration we've been here come two thousand and twenty-three. In the city council chamber for going on thirty years, pretty close to thirty years. And it is one of the first administration that did offer an opportunity for us to partner with them and putting our youth to work into some capacity as for the grant that was offered, but, uh, so we appreciate that. But at that time, we declined, at that time, we declined because of some other aspirations and things that we are moving forward on as an organization. However, uh, so I, we appreciate that extension and that offer. Pretty much for twenty-three years, we never really had to come down and offer the city, or ask the city for anything, because we've been pretty good at raising funds on our own. First and foremost, I think if we come down and demand the city for something, we should be able to show something in the community that we've done ourselves, and making a demand on ourselves and to raise funds and to do things like that. But I will say what one, what definitely one thing that I could say I wouldn't mind partnering with you guys on, and, and that is, when it comes to the civilian officer police accountability, and I've told you guys that time and time again, I don't think any good officer would have a problem with the civilian officer police accountability. I would definitely nominate myself to be a part of that civilian officer police accountability. Uh, I do have the ability, I think time has shown that I, we have, that I have an ability to be objective and to operate with integrity on behalf of all citizens. But having a civilian officer police accountability is good, as I said, for, for the city, but it's definitely good for the citizens. We'd like to see everybody go home alive. We like to definitely see our citizens go home alive. We like to see the police officers go home alive. I wouldn't want anything to happen, such was the case with the young black police officer, the Chicago lady who was killed in front of her own home. So everybody deserve a chance to go home alive. But I would like for this administration to take into consideration the civilian officer police accountability. Alderman, think about it. It's good all the way around. So thanks for the offer to work with you, but I would be more pleased to work with you on that civilian officer police accountability, so everybody can go home alive and everybody be held accountable when it comes to things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. Madam Mayor, that concludes.
David, Mr. Urbannick is back, can he have his time?
Absolutely, yes, please approach, and you'll get your three minutes, if you can just restate your name for the record.
My name's Michael Urbannick. I was here on the second of August of last year, asking for the possibility of creating an area where citizens of our community could take their dogs down to lakefront for purposes of swimming and exercising and so forth. Several of the council members were very receptive. Thought it was a good idea, and they entertained the idea of getting together with beach director Lisa May, and said that, you know, we would get together and we could take, take, take a look at it and pick out an area that we could probably work together on. I believe Alderman Kirkwood and Alderman Turner subsequently met with Lisa May, and they reviewed the areas and that. And I met with Alderman Turner a couple of months ago, and Alderman Turner indicated that unfortunately, he didn't think that it would be a possibility that we could have an area that we could take our dogs to. So if this issue is dead in the water, I would like to ask for the possibility of getting a special use permit that maybe individuals with the approval of the city could take their dogs down there to swim with the following rules, okay? Dogs would have to be currently vaccinated with the appropriate tags attached to their collars. Dogs would be leashed at all times while in the parking lot, on the beach, and in the water. Dogs would be kept north of the Breakwater Pier. There's approximately two miles of beach between the Breakwater and the Old Commonwealth, that is an electrical plant. Dogs would be kept away from all beach visitors. Dogs would of course be kept away from the bird sanctuary area and would not be allowed within that area. They would be responsible for cleaning up, cleaning up after their dogs and properly dispose of any collected waste. And they'd be willing to sign any release forms deemed necessary by the city. I've owned dogs for sixty-three years, I'm a responsible dog owner. Following these rules, I'm a taxpayer, I'm a city retiree of the city that, that worked for thirty and a half years for the city. Following these rules, I don't know what I would hurt by being allowed to take my two dogs down to the beach to swim. So if you would consider it, I'd really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Urbannick, and my apologies for missing you, thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes audience time.
Thank you, Cooper Council. Cooper Council, could you address one thing that came up?
Yeah, the flyer that was distributed regarding the, the donut truck, it appears that that was an event held by Lake County Government for its employees as part of Public Service Recognition Week. A number of local governments, and we should all give recognition to public, public employees, brought in like food trucks for their employees, and this appears that this was something that was done by the county in their parking lot. And it, they gave their employees free notice.
You still have to follow the rules.
Uh, if it's on your, if it's on private property and it's not open to the public, that's determined not to be a special event, in that, in that case.
We weren't frankly even informed about it, that's something that they did. And hopefully it's just a one day, but it wasn't something we knew about. Onto the consent agenda. Can I have a motion? I need a first and a second. Alderman Florian is the first, a second, Alderman Newsom. Okay, any questions to the consent agenda? Anything that you want pulled?
I'd like to pull out item H just for commentary.
There is no H. There is no H on consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. We'll talk about H when we get to new business, thank you.
Okay. Being no questions to the motion. Item A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item B, motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes from Monday, May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Item C, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Item D, motion to approve the special meeting minutes from Monday, May first, two thousand and twenty-three. Item E, motion to approve vendor payments dated May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, in a total amount of two million, five hundred thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Item F, a motion to approve regular payroll dated May fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, in a total amount of one million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and forty-two cents. Item G, a motion to approve miscellaneous payroll, paid holiday payback, CT cash out, vacation cash out and final payment, dated May fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, in a total amount of fifty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. Any questions to the motions? Roll call, please, Deputy Clerk.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez. Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaldworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item five, there being no reports in communication. Item six, there being no old business, new business.
Can I make a motion that we do this as a consent agenda, Mayor?
Um, omnibus, we can do it as an omnibus.
I'm sorry.
But I do need to pull out W. And anything else, you wanted item H, Alderman Turner?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Any others that people would like pulled out? Okay, can I have a first and a second to read the motions?
I'll make the first.
First by Alderman Turner, a second by Alderman Guzman. Item A, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to award the bid for the two thousand and twenty-three annual commodities asphalt portion only to Peter Baker and Sons for the highlighted pricing on the bid tab. This matter was presented to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item B, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to award the bid for the two thousand and twenty-three manhole and catch basin frames and grates bid, EJ USA Inc., for the highlighted pricing on the bid tab. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item C, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to award the bid for the two thousand and twenty-three hydrant assemblies bid to EJ USA Inc., for the highlighted pricing on the bid tab. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Mayor, excuse me, I, I really hate to interrupt, but for those items that you read where you talk about, you referenced the, uh, the money, um, identified on the bid tab. I, and I apologize, I didn't catch this earlier. I caught it in my committee meeting. But I think we should include, uh, how much those, what, what the price is, what the money, what dollars we're spending. We're approving, spending money, but it doesn't tell us, it doesn't tell the public how much money. Um, if you bear with me, I have the, the numbers here in my packet from the committee. I can, we can just interject those dollars.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So for item A, uh, item A was a resolution approving and authorizing, uh, Peter Baker. Right, for asphalt. That dollar amount is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, item B, the amount is sixty-two thousand dollars. Item C, the amount is one hundred thousand dollars. Item D is one hundred twenty thousand dollars. And I think the rest of them, we have the, uh, dollar amounts, but for those five.
Actually, when it comes to your committee, next time, please make sure that they have it in so that we don't overlook that.
Absolutely right. Thank you. And thanks for your patience.
Um, no problem. Item E, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to award the bid of the twenty twenty-three water plant chemicals bid to multiple vendors for an anticipated amount of two hundred and fifty thousand. This amount was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item F, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve a resolution awarding the twenty-three through twenty-five sludge to watering bid to Noble Environmental for a not to exceed amount of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for twenty-three, twenty-four and a hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars for twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, this matter was presented in the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item G, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve construction engineering services with Crawford, Murphy and Tilly per section two, four, five, eight, I four professional services for a not to exceed amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars for the River Road Main, uh, roadway improvement project. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item I, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to award the Glen Rock culvert replacement RFP to Boulder Contractors for a not to exceed amount of one million, five hundred and seventy thousand and a hundred and ninety-one dollars. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item J, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve a resolution for design engineering services from Robinson Engineering per section two, four, five, eight, I four professional services for the fiscal year twenty-four street rehabilitation program for a not to exceed amount of four hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. This amount was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item K, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve a resolution adopting the Lake County All Natural Hazards Migration Plan, twenty twenty-two update. This matter was presented to the Public Works Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item L, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to award the River Road Water Main and Roadway Improvements RFP to Berger for a not to exceed amount of two million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, eighty-two dollars. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item M, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve a resolution approving an agreement between North Shore Gas and the City of Waukegan for the River Glen Lift Station and subdivision gas main extension deposit for a not to exceed amount of three hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and thirty-two cents. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item N, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to enter into an agreement with Zorba to review watershed permits and plans per section two dash four, five, eight, I four professional services for a not to exceed amount of a hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents. This amount, or this matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item O, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to execute a temporary construction easement with the Lake County Stormwater Management Commission for the purpose of assessing the right of way easement as is necessary for the maintenance of drainage and infrastructure reconstruction and other purposes on and over through vacated Knight Avenue. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item P, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve the leachate pumping and hauling services with Covanta Environmental Services per section two, four, eight, I sole source for three-year term of sixty-five thousand dollars per year. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Item Q, a resolution of repealing, uh, resolution repealing resolution number twenty-three R sixty-five waiting competitive bidding process and reapproving the purchase of a Chevrolet Silverado twenty-five command, twenty-five hundred command vehicle from John Jones Auto Group and radio from, uh, ChiCom for the fire department. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on May fifteenth. I will just point out, we approved this before, but we only approved for the money to go to the, um, to the John Jones Auto Group and that needed to be divided so that it went to the ChiCom, uh, for the radio. Um, yes, and the amounts are.
The total amount was one hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-two cent. That was the total amount. It had to be split. John Jones will get one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and forty-five cent. Uh, ChiCom will get thirty-eight thousand, one twenty-seven, seventeen for the, um, Motorola equipment.
Thank you.
Item R, a resolution approving the application and acceptance of a grant from the Dickey Foundation for Ballistic Armor. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. This is not for our police department, but for our fire department.
And that amount, uh, for the grant is twelve thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars.
Item S, a resolution approving the acceptance of the fiscal year twenty twenty-three co-responder grant from the Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
And the amount of that co-responder grant is two point three million dollars.
Now, these are just grants that we've applied for. Um, and this one actually, we have. Um, we are looking to make sure that they're going to renew that down the line. So when investments we make, we will be, we'll be able to keep. Item T, a resolution approving the purchase of Apex Virtual Reality Training Simulator Device for the Police Department in a not to exceed amount of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. The purpose of this is to cut down on travel for our, uh, police to go to training. This, um, we can create any virtual effect that we wanted to create, any training scenario that we wanted to make, and we would do that here. Um, item U, a resolution approving an application and acceptance of a grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation for a fireboat. This matter was presented to Finance and Purchasing Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Again, because we apply for the grant, we don't know if we'll get it, but it has to be approved here. And yeah, can I have the amount for that, for both, or for that one?
Uh, the program will provide eighty percent of the cost of the fireboat in the, uh, total amount of four hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and eighty cent. And if the city receives the award, the city will contribute, uh, matching funds of twenty percent, which is a hundred and nine thousand, seventy-seven dollars and twenty cent.
Um, item V, a resolution approving a release and settlement with Shanika Williams in case number twenty-three, CV oh oh nine four one. This matter was presented to the Finance and Purchasing Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Yes.
Total amount is two hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's a lot of things that you're seeing in here for Public Works this evening. That is because it is beginning of the year for our fiscal year started May first. So a lot of these things like all our commodities, all our projects that we're putting out, all go out now. So that's why you're seeing them on this agenda. Um, any questions to any of those motions? Roll call please.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaldworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item H, um, questions to the motion or?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on this one. Um, Mayor Taylor, uh, because this is one of the more visible, uh, and impactful, uh, concerns that, uh, our citizens are interested in. This pertains to a change order for Peter Baker regards the roadway maintenance program. So I'm going to read from my packet. Public Works is, Public Works is seeking approval for change order number two with Peter Baker and Sons for the twenty twenty-three roadway maintenance program in the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. The two thousand twenty-three rail, roadway maintenance program was approved by the city council on August fifteenth of twenty twenty-two in an amount of three million, six hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-seven dollars with funding charged to line item two zero five, one two zero five, two seven six three five. It was determined that additional funding is available, so Public Works is adding additional roads to the contract to be paved. Change order number one in the amount of one million, four hundred and eighty-three thousand, four three, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-five cents was approved on April seventeenth of twenty twenty-three. Public Works has estimated the price for the concrete into the total, but when the final prices came in, it was more than what was estimated as well as construction design work needed for sidewalk ADA work or Americans, uh, Disability Act work. The new contract total will be five million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty cents. Funding will be charged to line item three, one, two, one, three, one, two, two, seven, six, three, five. So I just want to bear that, bring that out for transparency and edification of our public. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Turner. Um, can I have a first and a second to this motion?
I'll make the first.
Actually, I would like to ask some questions.
Sure.
Okay, so is Peter, uh, to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, Alderman Turner, um, so is Peter Baker the only one bidding on this? Are the, they're the only ones?
Well, they, they already have the bid. This is a change order to existing bid. You, you're voting on change, on the second change order we're voting tonight. When I read to you, I wanted to give you all the backstory so that each of us as well as the public, uh, could understand. So this was bid on last year. It was awarded and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Peter Baker was the sole bidder, sole provider, right?
Okay, so nobody else bid on it.
Yeah, so.
And it's very hard for most, um, companies, asphalt companies to compete with Peter Baker because they have, they make their own asphalt.
Right.
And then they do the asphalt work. Um, so they generally come in cheaper than anybody else.
If, if another bidder wanted to do it, they'd have to go buy the asphalt from Peter Baker.
Yeah.
So they hold a monopoly basically.
They basically do, yes.
Can you reiterate the motion too?
And this includes like, uh, so sidewalks and stuff like that, the real bad ones?
The ADA sidewalks, yes.
The ADA portion, that would be the ramp right at the intersection, the curb at the intersections across the street. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Deputy Clerk, would?
Motion.
I made the motion, so.
Thank you.
And did we have a second on that one?
I'll second it.
Alderman Florian, second.
Thank you, Alderman.
Okay, um, item H, a resolution approving and authorizing the proper city officials to approve a resolution for change order number two with Peter Baker and Sons for the twenty twenty-three roadway maintenance program for the amount of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. This matter was presented to the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. And I just want to make mention that you can get our road program off of our website when roads are being done.
Thank you.
Um, roll call please.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Alderman Martinez.
Aye.
Alderman Felix.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Donaldworth.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Motion passed, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Alderman Guzman, I need to have you excused.
And just to reiterate what we discussed in Committee of the Whole, the city council has a policy that if any of the sitting Aldermen, um, are the licensee for a liquor license, they're required to recuse themselves from the vote. This includes not only refraining from voting, but also removing themselves from the dais. Uh, basically, the legal effect is that they are counted as absent for the purpose of this vote. They're not abstaining. They're not voting yes or no. They are not present.
Okay, um, can I have a first for the motion?
I'll make the first.
Alderman Turner, a second.
I second.
Alderman Bolton. Um, let me explain this ordinance before I read it. So we had, um, some issues with, on Sundays, we used to not allow people to serve alcohol until eleven AM. And obviously, there are some places that do brunches now or early breakfast that want to serve alcohol. Um, I believe when this was voted in, it was more pertaining to, um, liquor stores opening before eleven. Um, and I don't think we really were ever told about restaurants opening at that time. But now that we've seen that it's a problem for many of our restaurants out there, we are amending this ordinance right now so that we can allow them to serve alcohol for their brunches or early breakfast, whatever. Um, so I will read the ordinance. It's the ordinance amending section three dash thirty-two of the Code of Ordinance regarding permitted hours of operation for on-premises consumption of liquor licenses. This matter was presented to the Code Revisions, Appeals and Negotiations Committee on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Roll call please.
I'm going to take questions.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, we're changing it from just on Sundays, right? From eleven AM to down to nine, or as early as nine thirty AM?
Actually, it's, uh, it's noon on Sundays for, for all on-premises licenses. And the ordinance proposes to change that opening for on-premises licenses to nine.
Okay, so, um, you know, we have so many controls and, and rules and regulations and everything that around liquor on the west treated so differently, but it would seem to me that if you're over twenty-one, you're drinking in an establishment legally, it would seem to me you'd be able to drink there whatever, during whatever their operating hours are. If they open a restaurant at six AM and you go in there, you want a Bloody Mary. I think that's one of them, or whatever, right? You want some alcohol and they, they have a liquor license. Why not allow them serve liquor during the course of their authorized operating hours? Why stagger it? That would be my thought too. Um, we don't have to belabor the point. I just want to make that thought out there. Put that thought out there and maybe we'll come back and address it at another time. Thank you.
Right now, most restaurants are not open before that for liquor. I mean, they're just not, like, they'll do a brunch, but it's usually, you know. Why this was so impactful is that it affected like our golf courses and places like that that they weren't able to serve.
So you know, I, I, and I appreciate that, and, and you're absolutely right, but also consider this. There are a number of businesses, uh, that have, um, you know, third shift, people work at, at night. They get off at six in the morning, seven in the morning, right? I used to, many years ago, I worked at the post office. I got off at seven AM. We would go across the parking lot to a restaurant. They had blackout curtains. And we just liked being at, at a party at night. So maybe you get some, uh, police officers or dispatchers that get off at, uh, six AM and they want to go over to the local restaurant on their way home. They want to have a beer, but they can't because they're, even though they're twenty-one and over, police officers, they can't have a beer at six AM. they can't have a beer at 6:00 a.m. So, it just doesn't make sense to me, you got so many controls on how we live and how we enjoy our life and so. All right, but thank you very much, Mayor.
Um, so, right now, um, yes.
Mayor, I just wanna comment, I, I think this would be just so much easier if you just give them the same hours every single day of the week and then you could just forget about this. You know, just 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. or 2:00 a.m. or whatever, just make it consistent seven days a week. You know, because it's six days a week, it's consistent, and you just have the one day where, where it's not and it just, I mean, yeah. I work midnights and I got off in the morning and we'd go out and have a Bloody Mary or a beer in the morning at six or seven in the morning, you know? So, I, I don't know why you're just, just don't make it standard. Whatever the operating conditions are Monday through Saturday, Sunday should be the same.
Yeah, this started off, this is a current code that we have where we have always made Sunday different. And like I said, I know when I was an Alderman and this first came up. I apologize, Mayor, I can't hear you down here. Oh, okay. Um, I know when this first came up, it was really talking about more like liquor stores. And we never really thought it through with restaurants. Um, 'cause we only voted on this a couple of years ago. Um, so, um, I'm sure you were probably an Alderman at the time that we did it. Um, but in looking at it, we've always had Sunday different hours. But this does affect, you know, basically your golf courses, it affects anybody who's having a brunch or anything like that.
Why would Sunday make a difference with, I don't get it.
It was always something that our town felt that Sunday was the sacred day, that we should not serve alcohol all day long. It's been our tradition, if you guys wanna change your tradition, propose it, we can amend it.
What about atheists? There's a lot of folks who live here who are atheists, who, it's Sunday's not a special day, so. I'd agree with Alderman Donaldworth, I think we should make it the same across the board every day. And I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Okay.
I'll second.
So, what was the proposal?
The motion is to, uh. Motion to amend, uh, the proposed ordinance change, uh, so that, um, liquor sales are allowed.
First, we have to make the motion to amend, period.
Yes, motion to amend.
But the, but the motion to amend, you, you were saying what you would amend?
Yeah, I wanna amend it so that, uh, liquor sales are allowed during normal business hours, Monday through, Sunday through Saturday.
Okay, so, well, okay, so, normal business hours can vary from business to business and we don't have normal, we don't have a regulation on our business hours. However, we do have for on-premises consumption, Monday through Thursday, 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Yes.
Friday through Saturday, 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. You could basically treat Sunday like Monday through Thursday.
Yes, that's, that's what I like.
Instead of the 9:00 a.m., 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. the following day.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
And then there, I'm gonna ask one more question. Um, the only amendment that we had in this was for on-premises consumption, and we were trying to specifically talk about places that, you know, restaurants or.
Yeah.
Off-premises consumption, basically liquor stores or groceries currently have, are able to sell liquor, 9:00 a.m. to midnight.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so, for off-premises consumption, your amendment would leave that as is, but for on-premises consumption, you would move the 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m.?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
No, whoa, 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 we said 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m.
Right.
Oh, from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00, yes.
For the liquor stores.
Yes.
But you would leave, well, okay.
No, the liquor stores are 9:00 a.m., you said to midnight, right?
Um, yeah, here, I'll show, I'll show you the, uh, I'll show you the, I'm gonna walk over and hand over. On-premises, you're going from twelve to nine. Now, down here, this is for off-premises, it's from nine to twelve.
Okay.
That's like the store space, so you would wanna move this basically, so, I understand.
6:00 a.m.
Yep.
Uh, Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Yep, great, thank you.
All right, hold on, hold on. So, for the, for the benefit of the public and the clerk, we have a motion to amend the ordinance as presented. And what it would change is in Exhibit A, um, a change that, uh, from twelve oh one P.M. to nine a, uh, sorry, instead of 9:00 a.m., service could start on Sundays for on-premises consumption at 6:00 a.m. That is the motion to amend on the floor, and it has a, does it have a, where we have a first?
First and a second.
Second.
And a second.
I have a question.
Can I just?
Who, Alderman Martinez?
My question is that these, okay, so, these are restaurants that serve liquor in, in a dining room, right? This is not people coming at, getting carryouts?
No, on premises.
On premises.
Yeah, so, they have to, so, these are for, okay, restaurants, there's been any carryout.
Yeah, so.
So, not gas stations. We don't do carryout for that.
Yeah, as proposed right now, this would not affect off-premises consumption liquor licenses. So, it would not affect liquor stores, grocery stores that sell liquor, gas stations, or any place else where you can carry out packaged goods in their original, uh, package for consumption off the premises.
Okay, so, I've got a first and a second. Any questions to that amended motion?
That's the motion to amend.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Let's do a motion to amend. I, I've got the first and second.
Mm-hmm.
Can I do a roll call on the motion to amend?
Yes, please.
Alderman Martinez?
He, yes.
Alderman Felix?
Aye.
Aldman Newsom?
Nay.
Aldman Turner?
Aye.
Aldman Donaldworth?
Aye.
Aldman Florian?
Aye.
Aldman Hayes?
Aye.
Aldman Bolton?
No.
Motion to amend passes.
So, what that means procedurally is that the ordinance that is now for consideration is amended to include the changes requested by Alderman Turner's motion. And so, it'd be, then we have to vote one more time on the ordinance as amended.
Right.
Sunday would be included into the regular?
Yes, yes. So, what it would be is the amended hours would be 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Sunday through Thursday, and Friday and Saturday, it's 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 P.M. Or, 2:00 a.m., yeah.
2:00 a.m.
Um, any questions to the motion?
We have, we have the emotion, the motion now exists, yeah.
Okay, roll call, please.
Aldman Martinez?
Aye.
Aldman Felix?
Aye.
Aldman Newsom?
Nay.
Aldman Turner?
Aye.
Aldman Donaldworth?
Aye.
Aldman Florian?
Aye.
Aldman Hayes?
Aye.
Aldman Bolton?
Nay.
Eyes have it, motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, there being no ordinances, it's Alderman time?
Alderman Martinez?
All right, if you want to. First of all, thank everyone for coming out tonight. Uh, also, I want to, um, first again, thank those who, um, took the time to vote and also voted for me. Um, and on a daily basis, I usually, living in the ward, I, I'm out there, uh, taking my dogs for a walk. I met a lot of amazing people. Uh, a lot of these people share the same common interests that I share, just for a better neighborhood and also better ward. Um, I appreciate your efforts to keep our ward beautiful, and I encourage those to keep, continue to do so. Uh, potholes, I know I get a lot of, uh, phone calls with potholes. Um, if you have a pothole that needs media attention, please don't, uh, hesitate to call me. My phone number is eight four seven, three nine zero, two six eight nine. Just provide me, I'm sorry, it's going, eight four seven, three nine zero, two six eight nine. Uh, please provide me your name and your address, and I'll do the very best to get someone out there to patch them up. Speeding is an ongoing problem as everybody's experiencing it. Um, I know your concerns, I hear your concerns, I, uh, have been working with our, uh, Community Chief, uh, Police Officer, uh, Lucas, Luca, sorry. And so, we're working together to try to do something about that, try to curb that, but it is an ongoing problem. Uh, so, just wanted to remind everyone that, uh, we are sponsoring a job fair, or having a job fair this, uh, Saturday, May twenty-first. It is from ten a.m. to two P.M. at La Canoa Restaurant, fifteen, was it?
The twentieth.
Oh, the twenty, I'm sorry, the twentieth, I'm sorry, okay, anyhow.
The twentieth?
Uh, ten to two, yeah. So, it is, uh, gonna be at La Canoa, uh, that is on North Green, uh, North Green Bay Road. I wanna give a special thanks to the community outreach for, uh, for the sponsorship, and also, um, Alderman Victor Felix for including me. Uh, there's still a lot of booths available, uh, so, please encourage to partake in the special event. And if you want to, uh, set up a booth or need more information, please call two two four, seven three three, five seven eight two. And then also, our neighborhood, uh, cleanup is going to be held Sunday, May the twenty-first, from twelve to four P.M. Uh, we are meeting at Los Comales Restaurant at, uh, six three five, North Macquarie Road. We are still needing volunteers, so if you can donate your time, please come on out, really appreciate it. Water will be served. Uh, also, wanna give a special thanks to, uh, Les Deffner for coordinating the event. And then also, I, I would also like to provide my phone number again for those who need it. My phone number is eight four seven, three nine zero, two six eight nine. Um, and so, I can be reached at that number. So, actually, that's all I have for now, again, I am happy to be here.
Quick question, you said the, um, Sunday cleanup was at La Canoa?
La Canoa, yeah.
Okay, so, is this a ninth ward cleanup or a third ward cleanup?
No, this is the third ward cleanup. No, no, oh, no, no, the, our cleanup, Los Comales, excuse me.
Okay, that's what I was confused about, okay.
Uh, Los Comales Restaurant, which is at six thirty-five North Macquarie, we'll be meeting there at twelve o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, so, with that being said, I just wanna wish everybody a good night, let's be safe, let's be mindful. But most of all, let's all be a good neighbor, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Martinez, Alderman Felix?
Hi, everyone. Uh, again, thanks for coming out and thanks for watching, if you guys are watching online. Uh, I had the pleasure of meeting, uh, having a meeting with, uh, Mark Jones of, uh, Waukegan Township. And, um, he mentioned that, uh, they provide lawn services for our seniors, but it starts at fifty-five years old, so, a lot of people don't know that they can take advantage of this help. And it's for lawn services and snow, people can sign up already. So, you know, if you, you know, if you have neighbors that are elderly and they're, you know, seeing, you see their, their lawns are, are long, please, you know, let them know about Waukegan Township, they can help out, uh, with that. So, let your neighbors know. Also, for the, um, for the snow removal, you know, that's something that's, you know, it's, it's hard on everyone and it makes it easier for everyone when our streets are clean, especially for our students. Uh, we are having a job fair, May twentieth, um, you know, uh, a part of the, uh, what was said earlier is that we need more police presence. The police officers are gonna have a booth there, so they're gonna, you know, uh, give information as to how you can apply to be a police officer and the steps that, uh, you would need. So, please, you know, uh, join us for that reason, for, you know, we want more community involvement, so, we need police officers out there from the community, 'cause for sure, you know, we care about our community. But besides that, we have, uh, uh, job opportunities for, for everyone that's looking for employment. Please, you know, um, join us, it's gonna be at La Canoa, fifty South Green Bay Road, from, uh, ten to two. Waukegan Township's gonna be there as well, uh, they're gonna be offering jobs for youth. They have a lot of jobs for, for fifteen-year-olds and, and up, so, please join us there. One thing I didn't wanna say about gun violence, um, you know, uh, if, you know, the people have, uh, ideas, please bring them forth, we are always, you know, I'll be willing to hear you out, but also, you know, come with a plan, you know, so that way, we can start something in motion or start talking things out. But more than anything, uh, a lot of this violence that we see in our, in our city can be avoided by talking to our family members at home before they leave, you know? Let's remind our, our, our family members, our brothers, sisters, sons, you know, to do right, do right, 'cause this is a community that we, you know, we want to take care of each other. Um, also, I've seen that, um, you know, there's a lot of homeless, um, uh, activity. Um, you know, if, if you see that there's homeless, um, uh, people in, in turn, uh, private property, you can let us know, you know, um, we, that way, we can reach out to and help them out or, or, you know, they can be removed from there, uh, by, uh, having the property owner, uh, calling the complaint. Just, you wanna make sure we, uh, reach out to the authorities. Uh, part of the period poverty awareness week, you know, I didn't wanna mention that, uh, there's an organization called Equal Hope, they help women, they're focused on women, but they also help men, and it's free services, so there's, there would be a good, um, uh, people to reach out to, uh, to look up online, Equal Hope. Uh, again, UMA Centers, uh, they wanna mention they're doing a lot in the community. Uh, they do provide food for seniors and for everyone that is in need, you just have to go to the website and apply. You know, they're in the fourth ward, they're doing a lot of good things. Um, they have a food pantry, they have job preparation, uh, information, the Spanish classes, and, uh, they help people get their high school diploma. Uh, for people that, uh, have the neighborhood, neighborhood watch, the neighborhood watch leaders, please reach out to me, we wanna make sure we start, you know, we, we keep it going or we establish new neighborhood watch groups in, in, in the fourth ward. Um, of course, you know, if you wanna reach out to the other Aldermen, please do so. I'm pretty sure they wanna keep their neighborhoods, their neighborhoods safe. Let's see, let's see, I think I'm almost done. Oh, if you guys have, uh, complaints, uh, uh, or needing information from different departments, send us an email. Um, why an email's important is that you guys keep a timestamp to keep us accountable, keep us accountable, that way, we can make sure that we're knowing what the timeline is as to when you're, uh, submitting your requests. So, that's very important, you know, and, uh, again, I, I invite everyone to visit our website. Just skim through it, look through all the, all the information that's on there, that way, you can be more informed. As, you know, as time goes, I will bring out important information for the people to be, um, aware. Uh, that's all for me, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Felix, Alderman Newsom?
Aye.
Thank you, Alderman Turner?
Thank you very much, excuse me, so, in the sixth ward, we're cutting grass now and I wanna remind everyone to not put your grass clippings into the street. They are like riding on glass and oil for a motorcycle or bicyclist. Uh, also, over time, they, uh, they get washed down into the, uh, storm sewers and eventually will cause backups and flooding. And when you're cleaning, cutting your grass and cleaning up the clippings, take a look at your storm sewers and remove any, uh, debris, just, you know, if you don't wanna pick it up and put it in a bag, at least just throw it up on the parkways. We wanna try and keep those storm drains, uh, cleaned out. We are again being plagued with car burglaries, um, this past weekend on sometimes Sunday morning. I too was a victim, as were three of my neighbors, two to the north of me and one to the south. In addition to burglarizing, one, two, three, four, five, six vehicles. They also stole two lawnmowers, so, these folks are, are walking in, in my, uh, like most of us, I think, my garage and my neighbor's garage are, are at the back of our last, they, they came from Jackson Street all the way past our house, down alongside of our houses. Two, and went in, in my case, they went in the garage and into my wife's car. And, uh, my truck was parked out there, they went in there, my neighbor, same thing. So, um, and, and, you know, I, I remind people to do this, and I, I, I didn't do it myself. So, we have to remind each other, lock your cars up. They didn't break in, they just opened the door, right? Uh, and fortunately, they didn't, uh, they were more interested in loose change, they didn't steal anything more value other than one of my flashlights. Uh, but they did steal s- two six hundred dollar lawnmowers, so. Be wary of car burglaries. Uh, we got some cleanups that are being scheduled, I don't have the confirmed dates yet. Um, Mr. Garland, if you could remind Art or, or Eddie to reach out to me on, uh, this. We're gonna do a cleanup in the sixth ward of, uh, John's Mansfield Court at the east end, that's where it kinda dead ends behind, uh, North Avenue. And then also, the intersection of Longview and Lorraine, there's just a ton of garbage that collects there over the winter from the wind pattern, so, a lot of garbage blows out of garbage trucks and dumpsters and ends up in that corner. We've cleaned it up four times, I think, now, and we're gonna make another effort. Uh, number four, uh, cop on the roof this Friday, right, chief? Sixteen, six a.m. to nine a.m.? I think it's six to nine. Is it noon?
Five a.m.
All right, see, all right, five a.m. And they're gonna be at Dunkin' Donuts, on the roof of Dunkin' Donuts on, uh, Grand, on Washington, and at Fountain Square, is that correct? Washington and Fountain Square, all right, so, uh.
So it's a good opportunity to go out and meet some police officers, and there's a fundraiser for, I think, for Special Olympics, and you get some swag and a free cup of coffee, all right? Cop on the roof. All right, now, number five, you know, this is the twelfth year that I'm doing my sixth ward rewards program, which as you all may know, or maybe you recall, that every year between Memorial Day and Labor Day, I'll offer a cash reward for money, of money for information leading to the arrest and conviction of persons committing crimes in the sixth ward. And sometimes I do various categories, and ten thousand dollars, twelve thousand. I've got things that I'm planning my, my reward. This year is as much, but I am happy to announce that my colleague, Alderman Donaldworth, is going to split the prize with me. So this year, it's, it's sixth ward and seventh ward reward program. We're going to offer two thousand dollars. How we want to do it, is we're going to do for any crime or just specific gun crimes, turning in an illegal gun, or what are you going to do?
Oh, you know, we can start off with, with the guns.
Okay.
And see what we can do.
All right.
I mean, if somebody comes in with something, something really good, we'll, we'll look at it.
All right. So, so for now, we'll, two thousand dollars. If you are aware of anyone in possession of an illegal firearm in either the sixth ward or the seventh ward, you give information leads to an arrest and conviction. Me and Mr. Donaldworth will give you two thousand cash dollars. How about that? And that's good between Memorial Day and Labor Day. And for the other Aldermen, if any of you would like to join in on this, give me a call and we can talk about it and up that ante, okay? So that's all I have. Thank you all for you very much for your time and attention. Have a good night.
Thank you, Alderman Turner. Alderman Donaldworth.
I'm so glad to be back in the service of Waukegan. Getting over here, seeing a lot of the friends that I've seen before, I probably know ninety percent of the people here, and then, of course, meeting new friends, and, you know, definitely touch bases with the police department, fire department. David Motley gave me the, the good old tour, run around Waukegan. I saw the water plant and city yards and code enforcement, and of course, City Hall. And I went in and talked to people and just, just told them who I was and figured out if they needed anything, they could give me a call. And I want to thank everybody from HR and everything for helping me out again, because I have to fill those forms back out again. And I would have thought I worked here for thirty years, they should still have them on file, but they don't. Basically, I don't, I don't have a cleanup yet. I've been looking. I haven't found anything. I'm going to talk to a couple more people, but if anybody knows anywhere that, in seven that needs a cleanup, we can figure it out. Then basically thanking everybody, you know, for voting. My phone's been ringing off the hook. I've already talked to at least fifteen to twenty people, and I've already taken care of at least twelve of them to ultimate goal and satisfaction and made them happy, so I'm out there all the time running around. So if you know anybody in my ward, and they see me, stop me, and we'll see what we can do. But Alderman Turner and I are going to work, work together, see what we can do, and, you know, let's stop this crime. That's about all I have today.
Thank you, Alderman Donaldworth. Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. I just want to invite everyone, this Thursday, the Waukegan Park Foundation is having the Party for the Parks Spring Fundraiser from six to eight PM in the Splash Zone at Corinne Rose Park, which I grew up as Belvedere Park, but now it's Corinne Rose. We're going to have a silent auction, food, refreshments, drawings, and most importantly, a live concert by Blues Family Robinson, a local band that is just amazing if you haven't heard them. Tickets are available at the door, it's sixty-five dollars a person. It's a great little event. They'll be, you know, just, it's a fun little event, and it's a great way to raise money for supporting our park district. As we talked about earlier with the Coast Guard, one of the programs we support is every second grader in Waukegan has the opportunity to come to the fieldhouse and learn water safety. They get to spend a whole day. So the goal is eventually to not have anybody drowning in our lake, right? So we won't have our Coast Guard needing to go save people. And I had the opportunity a few months ago to go when they had a group of kids there, and they were just so excited and having so much fun, and the lifeguards that worked with them were just amazing, and, and I think it's just the most amazing program. It's actually how I got involved in being a board member for the foundation, and I just encourage anyone who's available to come on Thursday, it's going to be a nice Next, I want to talk a little bit about the gun violence that's going, going on, not only in our community, but throughout the whole country. So this is The Week. It's, it's my favorite magazine. It's, it contains articles and parts of articles from all over the world. I don't have time to read every newspaper around the world, but this magazine gives me a glimpse of what's happening here in our country and around the world. So this recent issue contains an article about guns, specifically why so many young people are being shot. As we know, this issue hit at home here in Waukegan recently, as the mayor referenced earlier. I feel the pain of and frustration of our community. While we as elected officials and leaders up here are counted on to solve this problem, it's going to take all of us to, to make a difference, all of our effort. There are an estimated four hundred and fifty million guns in this country with three hundred and fifty million people. Four hundred and fifty million guns for three hundred and fifty million people, and I don't have one, so someone has mine. The leading cause of death in people under eighteen years old in America is gun violence. Let me repeat that. The leading cause of death of people under eighteen is gun violence. And I know some people right up here are probably going to say, it's not the guns, it's the gun owner. Okay, there's this. Tyler Austin Harper in Slate said, if there's a lesson in these tragedies, these, these gun violence tragedies, it's the average owner, the average gun owner is bad at guns. He goes on to say, only eight states, eight, require safety training to buy a gun, get a concealed carry permit, and almost forty percent of gun owners have no training whatsoever. He said, this means most gun owners are bad shots with bad nerves who spray bullets when frightened. Jill Filipovic in CNN dot com says that when so many people are armed, senseless violence is inevitable. The very gun violence created by lax gun laws and mass gun ownership fuels the kind of fearlessness that leads to guns, fearfulness, I'm sorry, fearfulness that leads to gun ownership. To change that, we need to challenge the idea that guns in homes make people, people safer, according to Nicholas Kristof in the New York Times. Research shows that a gun in a home is far more likely to be used in a murder or suicide than self-defense. He goes on to say, why not treat guns like cars? To drive, you need to take lessons, demonstrate proficiency, get a license, and wear a seatbelt. What if we adopted universal background checks for guns and ammunition, safe storage laws, and other common sense reforms? We could cut death, gun deaths by a third or more. What might be possible if only we loved our children as much as we love our guns? That's all.
Thank you, Alderman Florian. Alderman Hayes.
I didn't get an opportunity to do it last meeting, so I just want to welcome Alderman Guzman, Alderman Martinez, Alderman Felix, and Alderman Donaldworth. I'm really looking forward to working with you guys, so thank you. And to Don and the Finance Department, I thought that the, the presentation earlier was really, really helpful, and I just appreciate all the work you guys are doing. It's the, the takeaway, and I know you said it a couple of times, but the takeaway is that, you know, first and foremost, the city did not increase the tax levy, but it's reducing its debt and reducing its expenses. So it just shows some real fiscal responsibility from the department heads and other leaders within the city. So I personally am really grateful for all your hard work, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I'd like to first start saying happy birthday to my mother, who is eighty-five today. Mary Sims. I'd like to say I thank God for her. Then I'd like to acknowledge Community Action Project for their event on last week. Speaking of, that this is the Week of Poverty Awareness Week, they, I salute them because they definitely give back to our community, and it's something that all the service that they provide, and we as city officials definitely should continue to work with them, Community Action Project. And then I'm glad to hear tonight that we are now providing social workers to work along aside with our police. I know that was a complaint, or that was a concern, so now raising your awareness, we have social workers that will be working with our police officers. And as had been mentioned before, every first or second Thursday at nine AM, we have breakfast, trying to mend our, our spiritual community, along with our, our community coming together to talk about what services they can offer and how we can work together. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Bolton. Alderman Guzman.
Thank you. So I guess I want to start off with gun violence, second ward. I'm going to kind of butcher her name, I'm not really good at it. Neelias Colazo, I want to say. It happened on Lewis and Tenth in my ward, and plus, she is also a resident of my ward. I, I got to go meet the family, I went to the wake, very nice people, spoke for a little bit, but the gun violence really has to slow down in the whole city. I know we're never going to eliminate it or anything like that, but we need to get these youths more things to do, and, I mean, I'm very excited with the job outreach program that, for the job fairs and everything that's going on in the city with different programs, but we need to try to do a little bit more with education and try to go down on this gun violence. Second, I want to say, I was saddened to hear about Ms. Baylen passing. I, I knew her husband, I didn't know her very well. He was my Alderman for all the years that I was living there, very nice John. Next, I want to provide my telephone number. I got to keep the same telephone number as Alderman Seager, so eight four seven three nine oh twenty-six ninety, if anybody needs anything, please give me a call, or jose, J O S E dot G U Z M A N at waukeganillinois.gov. I have a couple projects in the works. First, Dunley Court, I'm going to stretch out the no parking zone on both sides of the street, so anybody in that court can go easily in and out. I'm, I'm looking for a four-way stop in front of Mike's Pizza, because I know there's, I mean, the, the restaurant is very popular, I go there myself, but we need more sensible with the traffic. Letting, letting coppers, service pipes for the service that comes in your, in your home. I'm going around finding out what your, what your homes come in with, service pipe, so and you could go on the city website and do your scratch test and send it in to get, to get your home scratched off the list. I'm hoping to finish off the second ward by the end of this year. Job Fair, April twentieth, at La Canoa, and I think that's about it. Thank you.
May twentieth. Thank, thank you, Alderman Guzman. Mayor, that concludes Alderman time.
Thank you. I just want to thank the new Aldermen for being here this evening and being part of this. This is a whole new ballgame. Again, thank you, everyone, for being here. May I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Donaldworth, the second. Alderman Martinez, all those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone.